At five thirty-five P M. I have a roll call please.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Anna Isabel Dos Reyes Cuto.
Yeah.
Amanda Carlo is absent, John Cambio is absent, Bradford Mayer.
Here.
Dorothy Jacqueboni.
Here.
Cody Rydel.
Here.
Don Coward.
Here.
Thank you. And is there a motion to recess into executive session?
I make a motion to recess into executive session at five thirty-five P M. to consider matters relating specifically to student matters R I G L forty-two forty-six five A eight home school request. Approval of executive session minutes from May twenty-second two thousand twenty-five where the following items were discussed approval executive session minutes from May eighth twenty twenty-five superintendent contract R I G L forty-two forty-six five A one discussion. Superintendent's evaluation R I G L forty-two forty-six five A one discussion approval of executive session minutes from June third twenty twenty-five where the following items were discussed superintendent contract R I G L forty-two forty-six five A one discussion. To superintendent valuation R I G L forty-two forty-six five A one discussion. Superintendent valuation R I G L forty-two forty-six five A one discussion and superintendent's contract R I G L forty-two forty-six five A one discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Chair votes aye, any opposed?
Motion carries five to zero.
Could everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, et in unum.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. And Superintendent Coward, could you provide the safety notifications for the meeting?
Yes, in case of emergency, we need to vacate the room and building. You would exit out that door, turn to your left or right, and follow the signs back out to where you came in.
Thank you. And Member Jacquepony, could you honor us with the reading of the mission statement?
The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. Next item is the executive session report. An executive session, three votes were taken. The first to approve homeschool requests, the second to approve executive session minutes of May 22nd, and the third to approve executive session minutes of June 3rd. All passed unanimously. Is there a motion to seal the records of executive session?
I make a motion that the records of executive session be kept closed pursuant to sections 42, 46, 4, and 42, 46, 5.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item is the approval of minutes for May 22nd and June 3rd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2025, and June 3rd, 2025, as presented.
Second. Any further comment? Seeing none. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments for topics listed on the agenda. If anyone gathered here today would like to speak during public comment, please step up to the microphone. I see no takers. We'll move to Zoom. There are two people on Zoom. If you would like to speak during public comment, please raise your hand on Zoom and wait to be called on. Going once, twice, three times. No hands. Citizens' comments. It is closed. Next item on the agenda is retiree acknowledgement for discussion. Superintendent Coward?
So I'm just going to kick this off. You know, I realized at some point during last summer that, you know, as we were working on preparing for the next year, that we had had some people retired. And when those people retired, you know, they got acknowledgement from their buildings and from their staff. But we never really had an opportunity to acknowledge them and their time in Coventry publicly. And so what I wanted to do is just give our committee and the community an opportunity to hear some of the people who have retired this year, the amount of time they've given to our district, and to acknowledge all they've done for students, for staff, for families. These people range in a variety of different roles and capacities, many, many years between all of them together, but even individually. So I think I'd like to read their names if that's okay. So Lisa LeChance was a teacher at Allen Shawn Fein Middle School, and she retired after 13 years of service. Shannon Rolls was a clerk at Feinstein Middle School and retired after 25 years of service. Karen New was a teacher assistant at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School and retired for 25 years. Anthony Costa Jr., band teacher, Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School, retired after 34 years. Paula Mercurio, regular ed teacher at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School, retired after 36 and a half years. Lorio Loughlin, guidance counselor at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School, retired after 37 years. Diane Fallon, human resources here in Central Offers, retired after 30 years. John Kloss, the custodian at Coventry High School, retired after 22 years. Brenda Plant, custodian, Coventry High School, retired after 23 years. Mary Ann Madeiras, teacher assisting at Coventry High School, 24 years. Mary Ann Carlu, art teacher, Coventry High School, retired after 26 years. John Ferrara, special ed teacher, Coventry High School, 28 years. Robert Feinberg, regular ed social studies teacher, Coventry High School, 38 years. Kathy LaRocque, regular ed teacher, Coventry High School, retired after 39 years. Diana LeChance, in the capacity of a curriculum coordinator this year for the district, retired after 38 years. Lisa Johansson, curriculum coordinator for the -- excuse me. Lisa Johansson, uh, curriculum coordinator for the dis- excuse me, teacher assistant Hopkins Hill, retired after twenty-two years, not to be confused with Lisa Johansson, the teacher who just walked in who's wondering, I can't believe I retired and they didn't know it. Surprise. Um, Robin Allard, regular ed teacher, Hopkins Hill, retired after thirty-five years. Lori Ferguson, our CTE director of the Regional Career and Tech Center at the Coventry High School, twenty years of service. Wendy Betez, regular ed teacher, Ty Oak, twenty-five point three five years of service. Diane Kuyth, custodian, Washington Oak, eighteen years. Cynthia McDonald, regular ed teacher, Washington Oak, thirty years. Carl Susie, custodian at Western, twenty-four point five years. And Robin Patraka, regular ed teacher, Western, twenty-nine years. So if you listen to the names, I'm sure many of them for people either here tonight, who watching from home or watching the recording at a different time will recognize the names of these people. Some people who are parents in these, this community had these teachers when they were Coventry High School students. And, and if, if you think about the dedication and the, commitment to working for our school department that these people have demonstrated, I just wanted to publicly say thank you and acknowledge all the work and efforts that they've put in.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of the committee? I see. Uh, I'll comment then and just say I wanna thank everyone who you read off here. I definitely, as a parent in the district, recognize more than one name on this list and, and it's, uh, the years of services for some of these folks is, is amazing. So we wish them well in their retirement and hope they, uh, do well in their next adventure. Next item on the agenda is Y M C presentation for discussion.
So Oliver's here from the YMCA. If he's got other people with him, he could introduce them. I, I met Oliver, I think it was last year. He had recently relocated to, I think it was last year, right? He relocated to Rhode Island from, I want to say it was like Georgia or Florida or Florida, to take on the, the role of director of Camp Westwood. I don't know if that's the official title, but that's what I'm calling you. And so we've met a few times. He's been active in the community, supporting the schools at a variety of different events. And he also, Camp Westwood also provides after-school care, before-school care at at least two of our schools. And he had attended a meeting a week or two, a month or two ago, and we discussed maybe him coming in and doing a short presentation for the school committee, just so people are aware of the value that Camp Westwood brings to Coventry and Coventry Public Schools. So I'll turn it over to you, Oliver.
Okay. Um, yeah, my name is Oliver Gigan. I'm the, my fancy title, I think, is Director of Camping Services. But, uh, the one thing I do want to start off is congratulations on a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, you guys. It's a big deal. Um, I'm here with my partner. Let her introduce herself.
I'm Stephanie Gerard. I have a daughter in the school system, and I'm the school age director for Camp Westwood.
Yeah. Uh, so like our introduction said, um, we're more than just a camp. We also do community partnerships, so childcare being one of the big things. But you're gonna learn a little bit about how things have been changing out at Camp Westwood as we've gone along. So a little bit about how we've been evolved, so we can go to our next slide. Um, so, um, we are with Western Coventry and Washington Oak currently as, um, before and after care, and Steph here actually heads up those programs. Um, we've also been licensed at Blackrock and Ty Oak Elementary School, and Hopkins Hill actually, um, just this past year has gotten a little bit more involved with us with our new field trip program. So, um, we'll learn a little bit about us as we go through, and we'll talk about some of the things that we're moving towards. So next slide. So, uh, the biggest thing to understand about Camp Westwood is, uh, it is a very different model than it was in the past. So in prior to twenty twenty-three, um, it had some other models and renditions it had gone through at one park. At one point, it was kind of a mobile home family camp park. It had a model where it was like a park ground, um, with kind of a membership of people coming in. So in twenty twenty-three, the YMCA Batucket, which is our head association, hired a new CEO who comes from a heavy camp background. And he, uh, started to make these changes to Camp Westwood so that it would be more focused very specifically on being a summer camp, uh, and working with kids and some of the things that we do in our outdoor center program. So, um, with him coming in, he kind of brought in a whole new fresh crop of staff, uh, myself. Um, I started, uh, pretty much January second, twenty twenty-four. Um, we've also, Steph has been with the Y Batucket for a long time and was moved into the childcare director position that she now holds. Uh, we've also hired some other camp professionals from around the country to help us, um, take Camp Westwood into kind of its next phase. And we'll start talking about some of those things. Next slide. Um, so what we've been, um, is a licensed and well-read program. So, uh, the before and after care, uh, offering family support, so that those families can have a more flexible schedule after, uh, school, especially at Western and at Washington Oak. All our staff are screened, they are trained and professional staff. You'll learn a little bit about the investment that we put into them. But these, uh, programs also give homework help. So kids who aren't typically maybe doing their homework, that should, um, when they come to after care, they do get it done. The programs are educational, enriching. Um, I'll let Steph talk about that in just a minute, but, um, really the big point of a lot of our programs is that we're building social and emotional skills. The nice thing about this is you don't have to worry about, um, running after care at these schools because the Y is able to come in and take it over for you guys. Um, and then during vacation times of the school year, so whether winter break or April break, or, um, like around Thanksgiving or those, uh, kind of random holidays sometimes, we do provide the vacation care, and you'll actually see one of our vacation camps in a short video in a bit. We've also started offering to P T Os at the schools that we offer childcare at, that we will do babysitting during those meetings. So that way, parents don't have to worry about finding a babysitter during those meetings, which means you can have a more active P T O. Um, and then we also, as a program with YMCA, we are a nonprofit five oh one, uh, C three, so we are a tax-exempt, um, operation. And therefore, we, uh, raise money annually, so all of our programs can be financially aided. So if there is somebody in the community who might be struggling financially, we make sure that our programs are accessible to them. So. Uh, next slide, please. So again, going back to that twenty twenty-three, um, we got a whole new team, and then twenty twenty-four, we kind of started revising our programs. And the goals were to serve the children and families of our community, uh, but also to have a facility out at Westwood, um, that would offer incredible programs. So, um, you can kind of start to see that a little bit in those pictures. Um, you'll see, uh, what is the zip tower now? Uh, you'll see some kids in our high rope skier. Some of our trained staff are starting to run some pre-programming, and then you'll see some of our brand new kayaks that just arrived for the summer. So, uh, big investments going in. We'll talk about that too as we go through, but, um, let's start talking about our programs in our next slide, and I'll let Steph talk a little about childcare.
So in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, this year, we, um, started some more involved after-hours programming. We started offering cooking, some STEM, some more art-focused stuff. We bumped all of our staff up in pay. We invested more in their staff training. They all go through twenty-four hours of staff training, mandated by the state, but then we also offer them more than that. Um, like Oliver said, we started doing babysitting for P T Os. That way we get more parents involved in those. We have, uh, an updated behavior management policy. Um, we now have a no, pretty much a no bullying policy also, like the schools have. So first, first offense, they're pretty much out of the program. We try to work with them if we can. And then we just started this year opening free evening programs to all of our school students. We ran some music bingo at Hopkins Hill and Western this year. This is a short video of the Western Bingo program that we had.
Yeah. So, uh, what we started doing is, uh, any school that is in our childcare programs or is coming to us with a field trip, we started offering these evenings. We had about a hundred and twenty, um, people from, uh, Western that showed up for that evening, and we kind of run it as a variety show. Uh, we play games, and then there's also, this was a music bingo night as well. So you can see us all in costumes and, and jump around and have a good time. But, uh, um, uh, that's a little bit about what's kind of been changing with childcare. Um, one of the big changes, I think, is definitely revolving around the staff training, um, aspect of our operation. Even certainly from our summer camp team, uh, we now went from essentially, uh, about a twenty-four hour training for our summer camp team to now, um, our staff will start training actually about three weeks out from summer, and we'll actually, um, every staff member will do a minimum of forty hours of training. But, um, we'll, we'll talk about day camp now, and we'll go through. So, um, obviously, uh, being involved with the school system is really important. We do offer a day camp program. Um, day camp is a huge way to prevent summer learning loss, so we obviously encourage kids to come on out to camp. But also as the facility, we've put two million dollars into it. Um, we now have a high ropes, um, activity, waterslide, a new crafts programs. And, um, we've also reinvested in programs, the lies, so like new bows and arrows, new kayaks that you saw earlier. Um, new programs with immersive and specialty camps. So now we can theme the camps for the kids. So even like our, um, themed weeks that we do with childcare throughout the year, those get themed and the kids can have a bunch of, uh, fun with them. We went from about twenty-five activities on camp to about seventy activities on camp, and many of them are portable, so we can actually bring them to our childcare programs at the school to help enrich those. Uh, we talked a little bit about staff training. Um, we actually were doing our high ropes training today. I was up in, I was about forty feet in the trees today. Now I'm down here doing a presentation with you guys. Um, first aid CPR is required for all of our staff. We also do A D training with them. Many of our staff also become lifeguards. We have the high ropes certifications. We have merge procedures, camp songs. And all of this gets translated as many of our staff who are involved with our day camp program are also our childcare staff. In fact, um, three, our three, um, like summer leadership staff are all site coordinators for us at different sites, I believe. So, um, so they are all helpful in that way. Um, and we've also increased our camp staff team for programming. So, uh, we have myself and Ryan Marsh, who is our new camp director who got hired, and then we also have Steph here. So we have a larger team facilitating these programs that we have in the past, new software systems. We used to be all paper. Now we have digital, um, which has really sped things up. Um, and we're moving forward with a new kitchen renovation, so we'll actually be able to do, uh, food service for the kids who come to camp, but also for the community for programs and such. So that's a little bit of a day camp, and you're actually gonna see, um, the next slide is, uh, of one of the vacation camps that we actually ran out at camp. So kids from the local community, from both Coventry and from Exeter West Greenwich came out, um, and they were able to enjoy a day at camp. Actually, they did a whole week. Yeah, so a lot of fun. Um, I think we had about thirty, uh, total different kids who actually came out to camp for that week. It was, it was a lot of fun, um, throughout the whole time. So, um, we'll, we'll move on. We'll talk a little bit about, um, some things. So the next is our outdoor center. So, um, a goal of Westwood is actually to expand our outdoor center season, so making the facilities more, um, more available to the school system very specifically, um, and to kids. So the field trip program has been a huge thing that we've been pushing for this year, and we've had, um, just about seven schools, I think, total who have come out, um, this spring. We actually had, um, a school out today all the way from Barrington, so they took a nice little drive to get to us. Um, they had a phenomenal time. They were down the water. They were on our new waterslide. Um, and they did some height ropes. They were on our giant swing today as well. So, um, Hopkins Hill, which is actually, um, if you've noticed, there's been a bunch of photos littered in there of our Hopkins Hill kids from when their field trip and they came out, from when they had a fun time out at camp. But, uh, the field trip program is great for schools. Um, we really do push for schools to come, uh, in the early fall or the late spring. Usually the late spring is a big old celebration to end their school year, kind of like a big field day, um, but also the beginning of the school year, having them come out to camp. We do team building activities, um, like our lower ropes course or games and activities that are specifically built to create a stronger connection in their classroom, so that when their class goes back to school, it's a much more easy to manage because we talk about things like communication, teamwork, um, understanding each other and, and where they're coming from. So, um, that field trip program is really designed to partner with schools, and, uh, one of the things that we hope to do is also increase our educational programs there so that we can do things like nature science with kids while they're on field trip as well. So if schools are interested in having part of their science program integrated into their field trip, um, we can, uh, collaborate and make sure that it matches wherever the curriculum is during that time of the school year for them. So, you know, if you're doing earth science, come on down. Um, another thing is groups and retreats. So, um, something that I know I've talked to, uh, Don about before is the idea of getting the teachers and stuff out, um, in the beginning of the year or for, uh, teacher training so that the entire, you know, um, school system, the teachers can come out for, um, a retreat to talk about what they're planning for their school year or having those conversations. We're also doing, um, team building. That would be great for the teacher group. So for instance, getting the science department together or the arts department, um, or the sports department or the math department together and doing a team building activity so that they can become a more cohesive group going into things. Um, and then lastly is special events. So the other thing, as we talked about, are programs that we're doing in the school specifically, but then also having events out of camp. We just had a family day on this past, uh, weekend. That was phenomenal, but it's a great opportunity for families in our school systems to get out, experience camp and to share that, um, with the, with each other. So, and get all those different activities. Plus, we have things like kids night out, outdoor classes, um, that can also be learning opportunities or just opportunities for the families in our community. So, um, that's a little bit about our outdoor center, and I believe the next video is just a quick one that we haven't posted yet, so you guys get to see before everybody else, um, of a field trip that just came out to camp. I think this is, yeah, Isaac Payne Elementary came down from Foster and joined us. Um, so there's some photos and stuff. So we actually do have a photographer on camp who actually takes pictures throughout the whole field trip. And then we are able to send, uh, a file of all those photos and videos to the school afterwards, which is really nice. All right, next slide. We'll start, we'll be almost close to wrapping up. So, um, a big thing for us is we want to talk about what we can do as partnership with you guys in the future. As we're growing, um, our goal is to become more involved with the school system. So we would love to be involved with every Coventry school in some way, whether it is the elementary schools that we already have childcare in, um, but also working with the middle school and the high school. Um, some things that the Y offers across the board are Y team leadership programs. So they do specifically team, uh, team leadership to help those teens, and they give back to the community. We're also learning with leaders within the YMCA. Those regular events that we talked about or specialized programming for education enrichment. So these could be bike riding classes or culinary classes, and some of those we've already kind of started. Our enrollment and our before and after, um, school, uh, programs growing. So right now, we would love to see those, uh, programs grow from where they are right now. I believe in total, we have how many kids across all of our schools?
Well, including Exeter West Greenwich.
Yeah, so, um, definitely growing in there. And then, um, uh, another possibility is local sports clubs, so maybe running basketball leagues. Obviously, the YMCA is famous for inventing basketball and volleyball and all that kind of stuff, so we love running sports programs. We've also talked about the idea of like a YMCA school event coordinator, so somebody who could help with your field days, help with school supply drives, help with the P T O monthly calendar events and such. Y staff assistance at book fairs, field days, so that, you know, you know, if you're looking for parent volunteers, you could also get Y volunteers out there. School staff trainings, like I talked about, um, field trips to Camp Westwood, uh, for the before and after school, um, field trips, and then also training, uh, internships and employment eventually for students. We start hiring our staff, um, as young as sixteen or seventeen, um, for like our lifeguards and everything, and they actually go through all that training. It's provided by the YMCA. So, um, we have that employment training as well. So, um, there's a lot of partnerships that we want to look forward to having with you guys that we can work with the school. And obviously, um, if you go to our next slide, we say what's next. So if there are things that maybe you saw and were inspired by, um, myself and Steph are here or open to chat with you guys to talk more about it. But, uh, uh, we wanted to show you the change of what Westwood is and what our goal is of helping the community and being a part, um, which, um, which we hope to do as we move into the future. So, um, we have a lot more capabilities and we're gonna continue growing. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll see that right in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of the committee? Uh, Member Jack Foney, hand it, hand it up first.
So you said it, there were changes in twenty twenty-three. How, how long has Westwood, uh, been going to the schools before daycare? Cause my twenty-six-year-old son went to it.
Yeah, we were trying to find a date for when, uh, childcare had originally started. Um, our best bet is it started somewhere in the nineties, um, in different schools, and it's, um, flipped from different YMCA's. Kent County YMCA has also helped in some of the, some of the schools, but I think we started, um, becoming really solely, um, Westwood assisting with Coventry schools in the early two thousands.
Thank you. Member Dos Reis, go.
Just wanted to say that I'm really glad to see that the Y is stepping up and improving the programs, um, which is very much needed for, uh, neighborhoods. So, um, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Member Reddell?
This is awesome. These offerings are wonderful, and I would definitely encourage more participation on our side with the Y. I'm curious. You said there's eighty attendees to your childcare program. Um, is that, that's before and after care, um, across all the schools? What are, what is the enrollment, um, for the, I guess? What are, what is the enrollment for the, I guess, two or four? I'm confused by the licensed and then the two schools listed. So what's your enrollment among our locations, our district?
So there's fourteen kids that attended before after care in various capacities at Washington Oak this year. And I think there was twenty-six at Western for whether it be two days, three days, some just came before, some just came after and some did before and after.
So you being licensed at Black Rock and Tyoka, is there just not enough interest to hold the before and after care?
Yeah, we just didn't have enough enrollment to open those sites.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Member Carla.
Okay, bear with me. I have. Now that I have everyone's attention. Okay, I have a ton of questions. So for PTO, PTA, to come to a meeting, does that cost the PTA anything?
No, it's something that, there we go. No, it's something that we're just doing to assist the community. So us having a staff, as long as we have the childcare staff available and we're notified by the PTO, we'll, we'll make sure we can get someone there to help out for the night. Usually we'll bring like our inflatable gaga pit or something to make it a little more fun.
Is that just Coventry schools or is that Rhode Island?
Right now it's just Coventry schools. The YMCA divides the state into regions for each YMCA. So we can assist schools that come directly to us, but we're not allowed to technically advertise to a school that might be in another YMCA's county. So if someone comes to us, we'd love to help.
Okay. The, now, Don, correct me if I'm wrong. The middle school has events, like after hours events, like dances and get your energy out events is what I call them. And the last one I, I volunteered at, let's just say could have been a little more elaborate. I think that the kids had, needed more to get their energy out. There, there was less. When it, do you do after hours for the middle school or is it something you have to do there? Can they come to you? How does an after hours event, not like a dance, but like a back to school event, so to speak, work?
Yeah, so right now we have a, like a few that you can choose from. So we have like a music bingo night. We have a STEM evening, like we call it STEM Olympics. So the school can essentially pick one of those and then we would show up typically around about six o'clock and we would run for about an hour and a half. But it can go longer. We can work with the school for a little bit. To be honest with you, we kind of, we love programming, so we would go late if the school let us. But yeah, so the whole idea is that it's something that we can offer to the community. So with the schools that we're running childcare in, we're trying to be able to run it either monthly or bimonthly for them as an opportunity. For the schools that come on a field trip to us, like with Hopkins Hill, we'll typically run the evening program a few weeks before they come on the field trip. Because it's also an opportunity for parents who are curious about the field trip to ask our team that's there, questions about like, what do we need? What should we pack? So it kind of serves two levels and it's also available to the whole school for the field trips. So well, for all of them, so the whole school can come out. The other thing that we would do for the field trips is we can create it into a fundraiser. So Father John Doyle Elementary School, they wanted theirs to be a fundraiser. They actually are, they raised over four hundred dollars to pay for their field trip. And we ran the event and everything and it was just the music bingo cards. The families paid like three dollars for the cards and then that helped pay for the field trip. But the whole school was able to come. And then the cool thing is that it builds anticipation for the younger grades that will come on future field trips to know like, oh, we'll get to go to Westwood one day too.
So if it's a PTO event at the middle school, do you charge like to come to the middle school and host like an event?
No, not right now. If the PTO asks us, we could, we could work out what the event would be. The events that we run for the childcare and the field trip are free. They're part of the trip and the field trips right now, we try to keep them as low as cost as possible. So it's only twelve dollars per kid. And then whatever we can fundraise at the event prior to all goes towards that cost.
Do you have team building activities for sports teams like gymnastics, soccer?
Yeah, we can actually, we can customize our team building for any group. So we can do kids, adults, and depending on who's coming out. So for example, like with teachers, I've done team building trips for teachers where we specifically cater the team building for them. So yeah, based off of the group, we can a hundred percent work on specifically what that group wants to work on. So if someone comes out and says, we would love to work on communication between our departments, we can do that. So, you know, that would be like corporate team building, a little bit different, but sometimes the games and the debriefs that go with them are a little different.
I think that teacher enrichment, as you were saying, I mean, we had a, a meeting based on trying to get kids off the tablets and the screens and get the teachers and kids engaged and get them outside. And I think this would go great with that enrichment program that's happening here. So I'd really like to get more involved and have that come to our schools. Cause I know that's one thing we've already talked about getting more and more, so.
Yeah, on, on that note, like camp is a, is a tech-free environment. So the kids aren't supposed to bring their phones or tablets or anything. So while they're at camp for the whole day, there, there's, there's no technology out there. That's why we have the photographer, so we can still capture the memories. They don't need to have their phone to take pictures.
I, one thing I do know is Tyoka Elementary had a lot of interest from when I was there of before and after school. I don't know if maybe they don't know you guys exist or it's new or there's a choppy communication somewhere. But I know last time I was there, which was last year, there was a lot of interest there. So maybe revisit that school. I don't know if they still need it, want it, change it, but.
Yeah, no, we def, we definitely want to revisit being in the schools. I think the program that we were offering prior to twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five this past school year was a very different one. So now that we have an improvement in our day camp program, that can improve into our childcare program, the, the two kind of work co in hand, work hand in hand. So now what we're offering in the schools for the childcare has, has, has really changed over the last year.
And lastly, so do you offer CPR training to teachers or is it just like your staff have to be CPR trained?
Our, our staff are required. So all of our staff go through first aid CPR and AED for the professional rescuer as staff of camp and for our childcare staff with the YMCA. But the Y also of Pawtucket, we've, since I've come in, we've actually trained three new instructors with the Red Cross. So we are offering now public classes with the Y of Pawtucket. Sometimes our trainings are up in Pawtucket. But if the school system was looking for trainers, I myself am a trainer. So I could potentially run for a CACPR lifeguarding if you guys really wanted it.
And that, and obviously that comes with the cost. We have to.
Yeah, that would just come with the cost of running the, the course, the first aid course. Cause the Red Cross does crop, does charge the instructors for running the class, so.
Thank you very much.
No, no problem at all. Thanks for the questions.
Any other comments or questions? Member Reddell.
Sorry, I thought of something while member Carla was asking her questions. Do you have any adaptive or handicap accessible options for programming? I don't see any in the slides, so I was just curious.
Yeah, a, a little bit. So we're still outside. There's obviously roots and rocks and things that we have to traverse over. But there are a few programs that we can actually turn into accessible programs. So actually our giant swing that you had seen in the video, we just installed a new lift that can actually take somebody who would potentially be in a wheelchair and actually attach them onto it. So they would still be able to do it. Technically our zip line does have a way to adapt so that we could get somebody on that as well. And then things like our boating and, and other activities, we can definitely adapt them to make them possible for somebody who might be of a physical handicap. And then campers who might come with mental handicap, typically if the schools come with them, they would need to have their own one-on-one aide. But we would definitely be able to still try to run programming with them. Our, our goal with the YMCA is we are for all, so we try to do our best. Sometimes in those cases, we just ask like for the best advice on how to help with that child and we adapt and learn. But yeah, some of our new activities are even handicap accessible or handy. Possible, yes.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I see none. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you guys so much for giving us time.
Member Mayor is stepping out for a bit. He has a family obligation. Next item on the agenda is strategic plan update for discussion. If no one objects, we're actually going to postpone that to the next meeting. There were the request to postpone that. See no objections. And also if no one objects, I'd like to take the agenda out of order and move to item H, CHS European Field Trip two thousand twenty-seven. More discussion and vote.
That's the first time they smiled so far.
I see no objections. So Superintendent Cowherd, would you like to start this?
Sure. Prior to the pandemic, our high school did international trips fairly regularly. They were successful, well-attended, a great opportunity for our kids to see things outside our country's borders. And some, for some kids, you know, their first opportunity is to travel. And so we're, we're coming back to a place where, you know, we're trying to bring things that used to happen often and weren't happening back into our, our programming. And so we have some very energetic teachers who had reached out to me about a field trip, a European field trip. I met with John Anderson and with Brooke Maycomber just to talk about a few different items that could be challenging, depending on, you know, how things played out. We also talked to the trust, which is our insurer, just to make sure, you know, there would be, we'd be covered if our kids, you know, went on a trip. So we feel like, you know, in terms of the district's liability and responsibilities, that we've kind of done the, the due diligence to make sure that this is something we can move forward on. These teachers have come forward to ask for us to, to get this approval in place because there's a, there's a lot of planning that goes into a trip like this. And they need to get the approval from the school committee so they can start that process. If we don't give them the approval, it's really hard for them to do what they need to do to get those up and running. So they're here. If we want to ask them questions, they can go to the podium and they answer the questions. But what I'm asking you to do is to approve, unless you have something you want to add. Is there something you want to say or? No, okay. If you have questions, they will answer them. But I'm, I'm just asking you to approve this CHS European Field Trip. It's for twenty twenty-seven. If you, you have the, the document in your, your board docs. You know, seeing that it's absolutely a hundred miles or more from where we are, it absolutely needs us, school committee approval.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, members of the committee? Member Reddell.
On the request form under cost to district, there's nothing filled in. It's not zero dollars. There's no, I'm just confirming there's no cost to the district.
So I'm going to let them answer the questions, but they have a whole process to kind of handle those kinds of challenges. Just make sure you hit the button.
So as of right now, because we don't have your approval, we don't have students enrolled. We put zero. The only thing that would be a cost to the district would be if we needed subs for any of the teachers, because teachers are the chaperones that attend the trip. So depending on the dates of our April vacation, so in twenty twenty-sevens, we don't know those dates yet. It'll be over April vacation. But depending on when the flight leaves, it may, and that's why we're asking for this approval. It may end up being like a half day where we have to leave early to catch, drive up to Boston to get the flight. And so we don't really know exactly until we have students enrolled. We know how many teachers are attending. We know their schedule and we know how many subs or coverage we would need for that half day.
Any other comments or questions? Member Carla.
I guess this is a silly question, but how? How will you know, well, when will you know who's qualified for this field trip? Like, is it the kids that are there now? Is it kids that are going to be there in the future? So we're looking to have students that will be juniors and seniors in twenty twenty-seven. So we're rolling it out to next year's sophomores and juniors. I want to roll it out in September, have parent meetings. I have a presentation to give to parents. We know the cost of the trip. We have payment plans. Because this is a student choice field trip, it's not a school field trip. There is, the students are responsible for the cost of that. So, yeah.
Yeah. The other thing I want to add is in terms of like the students that we might know that would be a little bit more interested. We are kind of gearing it towards the AP and honors history students because they're obviously the ones that are a little bit more engaged in the content. The way that, you know, our program works is that students are currently the freshmen that we're going to be rolling out to sophomores next year. Are already kind of on that path to be in those AP and honors classes. So we kind of already have an idea of students that might be interested that we would be kind of marketing it towards.
And just to, just to jump in, it would be aligned to the, the curriculum of those courses.
Yeah, so it's based on, it's a World War Two course, so tour. So that's kind of the focus of the tour. And then there is like a criteria that we created for students that do want to go that they have to meet because again, we're taking them to Europe. So there is like a criteria similar to like NHS, like things that these students have to meet in order to attend this trip. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll just comment, can you take me?
I was gonna say that.
No, there's a couple of restaurants in Paris I definitely want to visit again. That said, is there a motion to approve the CHS European Field Trip?
I make a motion to approve the CHS European Field Trip twenty twenty-seven.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Yay.
Thank you. It's nice to see that we're starting these trips up again because literally before the pandemic, it was annual, it was an annual thing that these European trips would happen. I have to get my place again. Next item on the agenda is item E, superintendent, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, goals update for discussion.
Yes, so I've been working on the goals that I presented to the school committee last summer. And the process that we have is a annual process where I am evaluated by the school department, by the school committee. And part of my evaluation process is my goals and reflection on those goals. And then I get my evaluation feedback and then I try to pull the feedback into my reflection to come up with goals for the next year. So it, it, it is a process of, process of consistently and continually of fine tuning the goals that I've written for myself, but also incorporating the goals that come from the feedback I get from my annual evaluation. So the document I put together is kind of lengthy and it's nine pages and, and I'm not going through nine pages tonight. But what I did do is create an executive summary as sort of a cover sheet. So I'm going to go through that and then just dive into some of the things I was thinking about what my next goals would look like. And then when we have our meeting in the summer, I will then present my new goals for twenty-five, twenty-six. So the goals that I set for myself this year, goal one was about building strong community relationships, relationships. So I've made some progress, but there's definitely some things I want to continue to work on. So we finally were able to get a superintendent's message on the district website. It has been up all year. I've updated it about three or four times. Some people visit it, some people don't, but at least it exists and it's there and it's not stagnant. And Jim helped me get that organized. I email parents consistently. I have been toying around with some newsletter templates. And then I actually do all the social media for the district myself. So anything that goes out on social media is, is something that I've shared out. I don't create everything myself, you know? I go to the different school pages. I go to the athletics page and I try to take content that is being shared there and expand that content out by sharing things that people are sharing out. We also worked on, you know, being more present at a community events, try to develop partnerships with local agencies. So I work closely with the police. I work closely with the fire department. I send out messages for the library services, the rec department, and I am a sitting member on the EMA committee. Jim is on that as well. In terms of transparency, you know, I'm really trying to work on how I can improve public access to school information through continuing to work on our website. And so one of the things we did this year is we have a calendar on our website and the calendar was a little stagnant. So we got our principals to, on a, on a almost weekly basis, update their calendars, which then drive into the big calendar. So if you go onto our website, all the athletics, all the school events, anything that's happening is on our calendar. And that gives people access to things that are happening at a district level, not just at a building level. And that's been pretty successful. I've shared that calendar with families through email. I've also had people reach out to me and say, you know, how much they enjoy knowing, you know, which events are happening on a particular day so that they can participate. So I want to continue to work on this. I think we need to, I need to do it to take that idea of a parent newsletter and flesh that out and, and start that for next year. So the parents can get regular email from the superintendent's office in terms of things happening in the school department. I also want to work on trying to put in place some informal community meetings, just to strengthen two-way communication between myself and the constituents of our community. My second goal had to do with working on employee morale and loyalty, loyalty to the district. And, and, and part of that came to be because the prior year we had just come off, you know, a reconfiguration plan and a really difficult budget. where we had layoffs and so many things that I just thought impacted us as a district that I wanted to try to find ways to, to address that. You know, we tried to really work on expanding the teacher of the year and SRP recognition. We've done a few different things in terms of our model. We change it every year based on the input from the people who are participating. And I don't know if I shared this out or not, but our model was presented statewide at the state meeting because of some of the things that we're doing in Coventry in this, in our teacher of the year program. We also have been trying to work on improving access to instructional materials and mental health resources. We've brought in people to speak to our teachers at meetings. We've tried to provide resources and just trying to work on making sure our professional development is differentiated and things that teachers not only have to do, but want to do. So that's, that's a hard lift. A lot of that runs through Amy's office and through the curriculum department, but there's a lot of work that goes into putting together a professional development day that is meaningful for our staff. I do send a weekly email to my staff, to the entire district every Friday. I try to do things like highlight successes or celebrate people or share ideas or just maintaining what I hope to be an uplifting culture. And I just want to continue to broaden out opportunities to celebrate our staff and to talk about what school-wide achievements are happening and how I can continue to share those throughout the community. And also not to lose focus on staff wellness and work-life balance, which I will be the first to say transparently, I struggle with. Some of us are so locked into what we do, sometimes we forget, you know, other things in our life are equally as important and we should not, we should continue to make time for those things. One of the things we also did this year is to work on building out a central office and district administrator evaluation process. So we updated the central office administrator evaluation model. We've talked about some clear, clear criteria, goal setting and opportunities for reflection. We also worked on professional growth by connecting evaluations to professional development pathways. We adopted the RIDE evaluation model for our building administrators to ensure there's consistency with our administrators and some of the things happening at the state level. We're going to continue to gather feedback onto the evaluation process and try to find ways to refine the linkage between, you know, how we evaluate teachers and their process and progress in their leadership development. Also looking at building out systems, I've said that numerous times over the course of the year, internally with our staff, but also here with the school committee. One of the things that we struggle with is there are systems that sometimes don't exist or they're antiquated and they don't make sense or they have stopped working. And sometimes you don't realize they've stopped working until we end up with a problem and then we have to go back and fix it. So, you know, we've done a lot with instructional innovation in terms of trying to find ways to help kids. You know, we've built out special ed program and like the bridge program. And we've done a few different tracks for kids who have disabilities. We also have started the Okra Academy, which we are continuing to fine tune just to give kids alternate opportunities for learning. We expanded some structured literacy PD. We also did some psychological, psychological support and strengthened our preschool SEL and math and other math initiatives. Operationally, we, we overhauled our financial oversight system. We have a monthly analysis. We have grant management. We have UCOA training that happened for all of our clerks. We completed three audits in one year, which typically you just do one audit in a year. So do three audits in one year is a heavy lift. That came out of finance and that's Chris's department. And we work closely with state agencies and our local agencies to address structural deficit. HR and payroll improved their use of the Keystone system and we have a much better system for personnel tracking and payroll accuracy. We're going to continue to work on building out our academic models. Also, we're going to continue to enhance Medicaid reimbursement systems and how we use instructional data to make improvements to our academic program. And then in looking ahead, you know, some of the things I was thinking about would be priorities for next year, but in, 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 like I said in the beginning, I would try to find ways to fold in the feedback I got from my evaluation is just to continue to find ways to deepen two-way communication with the public, to get feedback channels in place that allow people to give feedback so that we can continue to be reflective and improve. Keep trying to find ways to recognize staff and to give people opportunities to step into leadership capacity, refine and scale our evaluation so that we have more stakeholder input. Also try to strengthen our data systems. And something that Amy and her staff have been working on quite a bit is the instructional coherence that we're trying to do in terms of how we are providing instruction to our students. And then Martin, the progress, progress on this deficit reduction plan that will be rolled out shortly and making sure that our school bond is executed efficiently and in a timely manner. So that's my executive summary, you know, there's, there's plenty of pages behind it if anybody wants to look into it. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Comments or questions, members of the committee? Member Carla?
I'm, I have to say I'm really excited for the outreach to the community. I think there's a lot of parents out there, myself included, that have questions, don't know where to get the answers, don't know who the right person to ask, don't know who to email. And having like a round robin table of, of parents who are looking to support their children, further their kids, I think it would be a great help to our community to have that meeting. I really, really like that idea.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to thank the superintendent for going through this annual process of not only developing goals for the upcoming year, but also reflecting on, on the past year's goals and providing progress updates. I think that's, that's important to his own professional development, but also to the development of how the district moves forward. So thank you very much for providing this information. Next item on the agenda is superintendent contract for discussion and vote. I, I can start this one. So the school committee has spoken to the superintendent, has been requested that we, after following the review process, renew the superintendent's contract for a three-year period, which is standard. Superintendent Coward, do you have any comments or you'd like to say about that?
Not specifically, you know, when we have the evaluation process done annually, it's always nice to have the, the evaluation process tied back into whatever the contract is. Obviously my contract is for a term of time. It's not typically one year at a time, but it's good to have those things happening simultaneously. So it's, I appreciate having the feedback that I got in regards to my evaluation, but also in regards to a contract.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about superintendent contract renewal? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as was presented?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2026 budget approval for discussion and vote.
Yeah, so I'll start off. So this, this is a pretty simple process that we go through pretty much every year. So when we present our budget to the town, we're doing that in February and we're basing that on information that we have in February. Usually by June, things are changing, things have evolved, we have more information. And so we want to update the budget. We're not updating the dollar amount in any sense of like, you know, the town's giving us, you know, more money or anything. All we're doing is really changing the allocations based on need. We obviously in February don't know about things like, you know, who's retiring, who's not. We also don't know about maybe like, you know, kindergarten enrollment. Like there's things that we don't know about. So we have to make changes. And so we make them in June. Sometimes we make them again in September. It really is not about how much money we have in our budgets, more about just how we're spending it. It's also an opportunity to look at revenue. The, the House Finance Committee made a recommendation for state aid. If the recommendation that they made gets approved by the House and Senate, there is a slight increase to the school department in Coventry and a few different communities that we will keep an eye on. Because, you know, if it's, if it's something that we need because we're running short or tight someplace, we know that's available. We're going to, we're going to kind of set it aside for now. But if there's also an opportunity to apply that to deficit reduction at the end of the year in terms of like a fund balance, then we would do that just to kind of expedite the process. I'm going to let Chris get up and go over what he's provided to you. The format is, should be familiar, we've given you this format a few different times. Chris?
All right, hello. Glad I made it here in time. I was working on the audit in my, my office and I thought it was live. And I saw the, saw the YMCA people out in the hallway when I grabbed something off the printer and they were talking on my computer. So I, I realized there's a little lag, so I raced in here. But yeah, so like Don said, it's, it's not a ton of changes here. This is really just basically tweaking the budget, sort of refining it for things that have developed since, you know, we had, had done it back in February. You know, mainly it's both, both some tweaks on the revenue and the expense side. You know, as, as we got further into the school year, we had a better idea of what the anticipated positions are going into next year, what we're actually going to need. So there were a little bit of refinements to reflect that. We also have, you know, a better handle, a better idea on tuitions. What we have as far as students that are going to go to other districts for career and tech programs or for charter schools or even private placement, special education type tuitions. But as well, you know, in addition to that, we have a better idea of what we're anticipating for incoming enrollment from students that are coming from other districts that are attending our career and tech programs that will be able to bill and receive as tuition revenue. So both, both tuition and expense and revenues, you know, have been, have been updated. And then there's some other things like we, we get our actual premiums for, for the trust for property insurance for the coming year for that premium and what the workers' comp is going to be. You know, we made sure that, you know, after the RFP, we have the health and dental figures updated in there. And, you know, another, another thing that we, we looked at is our Medicaid revenue. You know, that's been, that's, we've talked about that in the past. It's, there's been a, a large effort. You know, Amy's really worked with our, our staff to make sure that everybody's, that we're maximizing our claims there. So, you know, we've, we've been able to realize more revenue from Medicaid this year than we had budgeted for. And so we felt comfortable being able to increase our Medicaid revenue numbers as well as our other revenue numbers, which, you know, that relates, besides interest and stuff on, on our deposits, it has to do with like the, the facilities use, which was recently done last year. They redid the policy. So we've been, you know, doing a much better job of actually offsetting our expenses by, by, you know, charging for use of our facilities to help cover the costs. So those are, those are some of the things. And then most, probably most notably on this, you know, as, as you know, we were working with the auditor general and the town for a deficit reduction plan. So that, you know, has the town, there's a, there's a dollar amount that's separated from their regular appropriation. At the bottom of the revenue section at the top, it's the other education appropriation, deficit reduction funds from the town. So that they're contributing $472,000 for next year. And then at the bottom of our expenditures, there's an appropriation to accumulated deficit, which is just over a million dollars. So that's a combination of, of basically what the town is, is kicking in towards that accumulated deficit and, and what we're planning to contribute based on, you know, trying to manage our costs and, and reserve, reserve some funds at the end of the year to start paying down that deficit. And then finally, as, as Donna alluded to, you know, this is pretty recent. The other day, the, the state's, the House Finance Committee had recommended additional revenue in the form of state aid to, to the schools. And so Coventry, you know, it's, it's not finalized yet, but the, the number for Coventry increased around $295,000 on what they, they most recently posted. But like I said, that's not, that's not a guarantee yet. That still has to go through the, the process. So we felt, you know, we've discussed it with the town. We, we wanted to take that money and just sort of put it aside because it's not guaranteed. Rather than, you know, go ahead and find something to spend it on, we added a line item. It's a second to last line item on the expenditure side. And it's a contingent additional state aid that's designated for either budget shortfalls or deficit reduction. So ideally we can finish the next year. And, you know, if we get that additional money and we're able to not spend it, we could apply that as additional money going towards the accumulated deficit to pay it down a little quicker. And in our, our initial five-year projection that we had worked out with the town, we, we came very close to, to the paying down that deficit over five years, but we were still a little short. We knew we were going to have to come up with some, some funds along the way. So that could help us, you know, seal up that gap. But also we, you know, the budget is a very tight, it's very tight. You know, we tried to make it reasonable, but there's always various areas where things could, things could happen and it could come in over. So we didn't want to sort of guarantee that that was going towards the deficit, the accumulated deficit. We wanted to have a little bit of wiggle room in case something comes up with, with the 26 budget. So that's why that's sort of set aside. It's, you know, to be determined if it, if it's all approved. And then, you know, basically hoping that that can go towards paying down the deficit or cover any shortfall. So with that, I'll just, you know, answer any questions if anyone has any.
Comments or questions, members of the committee? Member Carla?
It's for both Don and Chris. We were talking about not providing transportation to the kids going to other districts. Is that something that's happening?
No, that, that stalled out. There was a commission put together to do research. They met a number of times. I actually went and testified. And then there was a House version and a Senate version. The House, I think, did meet on it, but the Senate never scheduled it. And so my understanding is it's kind of fizzled at this point. There was two parts of that. One part of it had to do with the, the travel districts in terms of which communities were in which zones. There was some pushback from different communities about how the zones were drawn. So that might've been part of the problem. And then the second part of it had to do with transportation. And it really called out to the private school students. And so I think there was some momentum with folks who are looking to maintain or retain that level of transportation for private school students, which I think might've put enough pressure on the legislative body to kind of slow the roll on that. I doubt anything's going to happen this year. But recently the Department of Ed had reached out to every school department with some data collection around transportation. I shared it today with all the folks that need to add information. Like Chris's people would do finance, Mandy would put in from Ocean State, you know, how many vehicles we use. And, and I think what Rydell's trying to do is determine what everybody's doing in terms of local and out-of-district transportation. Because if you do a little bit of research, you will find that there are counties in this country that are bigger than the state of Rhode Island that are spending far less than this state does on transportation. And so we're trying to look at it from a state perspective in terms of other possible efficiencies.
My second question, when stuff happens, like there was the fire at the middle school in the freezer and we have to replace those items, where on our budget do we include that kind of like miscellaneous happenings?
So if there's, I mean, if there's something that stems from some kind of, you know, a fire disaster, you know, damage, that's basically would fall under our insurance. So it's not like a separate, you know, line item there. It's just covered under our insurance premiums and we would submit claims. You know, we have various claims. You know, we have various claims come up through, throughout the year and we will relay those to the trust and get, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll spend the money, but we'll get the reimbursement and apply it to, you know, reduce that expense.
And then when other things fail, we have in our budget, in, in, under Russ Hill, the facilities director, money dedicated for HVAC, electric, things like that. And so there is budgeted funds for fixing or replacing things that break. And then if it goes beyond what we think we can handle, what we've done for the last few years, as you all well know, is use the impact fees from the town to pay for some of those things.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Member Dos Reis Cuto?
Don, can you just, or maybe Chris, can you remind me, when do we normally know how many students will be out of district and students coming into district?
Yeah, so that, that information is coming to us in real time. It hasn't changed a whole lot in the last like two weeks. There may be another, you know, a bubble in, in the summer. But if you take the CTE program and the private school students together, it's just under 50. That's actually less than what we've, we've had in the past. And, and so that's, that's, that's a good thing. And then our enrollment of students coming into the district from other districts is higher than it has been in the past. So I'm not saying our problems are all solved, but I'm just saying I think we're making moves in the right direction by not losing as many, but also gaining some. One of the things I think I've said publicly before, that the RISA, as a superintendent's organization, has been working on having sort of an agreement among districts to put some guidelines or some guardrails on our CTE process as, like, instead of it being legislated in a law, but as like a inter-district, inter-local sort of agreement. And one of the things that's part of that discussion is a deadline for CTE applications and acceptance. And so if they put a deadline in place, like I'm making this up, maybe April 1st, then we would have a better idea of how we're going to budget for tuitions because we would know how many we have. The way it's set up now, we could get kids throughout the summer. I, I hope we don't, but we could. You know, we don't have to pay for kids who go to private school, but we do have to pay tuition for kids to go to CTE. And we do provide transportation, I think, for, because our zone has Warwick, West Warwick, and Foster Gloucester and Siteway and Coventry. If, I think we have a bus for Hendrickson because we have students who go to school in Hendrickson. So we provide a bus for them. So that's part of this whole zone thing, you know, anything within your zone, you have to provide transportation for.
Okay.
And included in that, we do have that, there's also the charter school. And, and then maybe a, a little more random and harder to predict is also some of the private placement tuitions. So say to like a Bradley or something, those, those tuitions are higher. It's, it's, it's more difficult to predict. It's not someone that's planning on going there and enrolling for, you know, four years. And, and it can be, you know, it can be costly. So we, we've, we've tried to meet and, and look at all of those three types of, you know, three or four types of categories of tuitions and get our best estimate to reflect in this.
I was just asking, as far as high school or L C E programs, not so much.
Yeah.
But thanks for that. I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? Member Jack Boni?
Question.
Don, regarding the school lunch deficit, when do we stop putting the message out there for parents to sign up? And is there any way besides having it on the website, sending handouts home? Can we get like an ad in the reminder? Maybe put something in the Kent County Times? Be, sending emails during the summer and trying to get the word out there? So maybe we can bring that number down too?
Yep, all great ideas. And we do some of those things. We have regular emails that go out from either our office or from the principal's office. We also started doing, not as often, but postal, like actual real mail. Because sometimes there could be an opportunity to get someone with a letter in the mail where if we send it to their email and it's inactive email account, maybe they're not checking it. We, at the upper level, the, the administration has actually spoken to the students because a lot of them are, you know, old enough to understand and, and, and be responsible. We've, we've done a number of things. You know, Chris and I had a, a little email conversation the other day because this was another place where Ride was collecting data. They reached out to all the different communities to find out what their lunch deficits looked like and how they're addressing it. And it's definitely a state issue. It's not just a Coventry issue. And so I think they're also looking at that level. There was, there was some talk of legislation. I'm not sure what the legislation would be, but to help address the deficit problem. So we'll, we'll continue to do the things we're doing, but we'll definitely add anything we can to bring the attention to the, to the families that they need to, you know, pay for the meals. And then as far as getting ready for next year, you know, once this school year is over, we'll start, you know, the last day of school was today, but we'll shortly start sending out information to families to sign up for next year.
And we can also, the kids who go to Parks and Rec in Coventry, maybe we can send home some information with them when it's time to start registering for all this?
Yep.
And getting, you know, go where the kids are and having them give it to their parent. So maybe it'll help.
Yeah, yeah, all good ideas.
Yeah, the new one, I believe, opens up over the summer, like, I want to say July, July, beginning of August. Because I, once, once that gets out there, I know Jim, you know, we'll end up, we'll, we'll put the link right on the homepage with like a pop-up, so you really can't miss it. It's, it, you know, sort of hits you right there. And then we start with our, like our email blasts communications. Because for the free and reduced lunch applications, if, if people are free or reduced, you know, at the end of the school year, they roll into next year free and reduced, right? They don't have, they don't do the, they don't have to renew their application for the beginning of the school year because there's like a grace period for about a month. Yeah. And, but that's, you know, that doesn't mean we want to let them get to the, some people just get to the end of the grace period and then realize they're getting charged and everything. So even though they are free, we want, we try to early and often get that message out that, that they need to renew it, that it expires and it's, it's not permanent. They need to, they needed to do it again, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but wasn't our participation in free and reduced lunch much higher this year than it was?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, yeah, we've, we've done a better handle of that. And I think, you know, we're strategic in, in the way we're, we're timing it and the, the methods of getting it out there to really drive it home. I think it was, there was definitely confusion, you know, going through the whole COVID period. And, and when everybody was free, people's mindsets changed, you know, everybody was free and, and they didn't have, they didn't have to worry about it. And then it sort of goes back to what, what it was pre-COVID. So letting everybody know that, you know, things have changed where we've come out of the pandemic and, and we're back to sort of business as usual. So we really need to drive, drive those applications. And we'll see if we can do a better job, you know, this year to, to, to increase it. But we've, we're definitely happy that the, the numbers were up versus the prior years, so.
Do we know how much it would cost to put an ad in the reminder? I mean, is that something we could do?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but we, we do it every year for kindergarten registration. There's all different sizes. It could be anywhere from $250 to $500. So we just have to decide, do we want to invest the amount, the money with the, the investment, you know, outweigh or, you know, would be worth what we could potentially get back?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much for the budget update. Is, we do have to vote? Is there a motion to approve the updated fiscal year 2026 budget?
I think motion to approve the 2026 budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. You want us to take a recess? We're going to take a five-minute recess while Member Dos Reis Cuto steps out for a moment. Item aye, SRP layoffs for discussion and vote. Superintendent Coward, could you like speak to this?
Yeah, and, and I, you know, we had a similar item a few weeks back, a few meetings back in terms of layoffs for CTA. And this is never something that, you know, we enjoy doing. It's, it's always a challenge where we go through this time of the year and have to lay off folks. Sometimes those layoffs are not a result of elimination, but sometimes it's about, you know, reassignment of positions. In this particular case, we do have two SRP members that we are laying off. The good news is that, you know, as the summer evolves, if there's an opportunity to call them back, we will. And that, that's why we're having our special meeting on Monday because, you know, some of the people we laid off in a prior meeting are being called back. And so there, there's hopefully opportunities for folks. There's, there's two on this list and, and even though two is not a lot, anybody we have to lay off is, is always something that we don't enjoy doing. So the recommendation is to lay off these two members of the SRP union.
Thank you. I'll read off the members' names. Mary Ann Santra Weeks, Washington Oak Nurse, and Carrie Sylvia Hopkins Hill Nurse. Any questions or comments for members of the committee? Member Jack Boni?
With these, this does not mean that this Washington Oak and Hopkins Hill will be without a nurse, right?
I'm glad you asked that question. And so there's two different types of nurses in the district. We have school nurse teachers and those are the people that are in charge of the health office. They have an RN license, but they also have an educator license and they are the, the school nurse. We also have nurses that are part of the, the SRP that are licensed RNs, but they are usually one-on-one nurses or program nurses, people that work with individual students. And their responsibilities are usually to a program or to a child, not to the entire school. In this particular, in these two cases, you know, there are some students that are either graduating out or no longer in the school. So the need for them to have an individual nurse no longer exists. But it's, it's a great question. I'm glad you gave me an opportunity to respond to it. Every school is going to still have a school nurse teacher as they have in the past.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the SRP layoffs? Make a motion to approve the SRP layoffs?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda is superintendent report, one, copy machine contracts, always exciting. Two, administration update. Three, five-year deficit reduction plan.
Yep, so I am going to be brief. So in terms of copy machine contracts, we're near the end of our contract with our current vendor. And so we will probably be exercising the option to either get a new quote from them or go out and do an RFP for other vendors. But if, if there's an opportunity for us to save some funds by moving or changing, as long as the, the quality of the service is, is acceptable, there's an opportunity. We may take advantage of that. So that, this is just a notification. This has not started. The conversation is at this point just between us and our current vendor in terms of what our contract is, what it expires and what our usage looks like, just so we have the data we need if we decide to move forward with that. In terms of administrative update, you know, I, I have made some administrative changes in the district this year. There's been some people reassigned to different positions. We've started the process of sort of settling that in. We've started doing some interviews for positions that were left vacant. And we're hoping to have those positions filled shortly. The longer they are left unfilled, the harder it is to get good candidates. So we're hoping to get that taken care of. We've already started that process. And the five-year deficit, deficit reduction plan is something that should be done. We're hoping by the end of the month. It's connected to the five-year projection that is required by the municipal, Office of Municipal Finance. So we're hoping to do those two things together and get those submitted in a timely fashion. Those are also sort of connected to the audit, which all, these things all should be really wrapped up by the end of the summer. And I'm hoping to have the deficit reduction plan on the next agenda for a vote. The only thing that could happen, I guess, is depending on how much pressure we're getting from the auditor general's office, they may ask us to have a joint meeting or a special meeting before our July 24th meeting, if they're looking to get that approved quickly. If they're okay with our timeline and our meeting schedule, then it will just be on the next agenda.
If they're okay with our timeline and our meeting schedule, then it will just be on the next agenda.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, members of the committee? Seeing none, we will move on to citizens' comments. If anyone gathered here would like to speak during public comment, please step up to the podium. I see no takers in the room. We will move to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak during public comment, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. Going once, going twice, going three times, and citizens' comments is closed. Next item on the agenda is scheduling of the next meeting. Is there a motion to schedule the next meeting for July 24th?
I make a motion to schedule the next meeting for July 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at Coventry High School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and that'll be exciting. I hope we get a tour of the gym or at least get to see it. Yes. And is there a motion to adjourn at 7:40 PM?
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:40 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, everyone.